After that or after that? Can we look in the last ten-ish fifteen years and see what was done before or after that? But I feel like... I'm not trying to say that.
Actually, I can probably get you more of that. It's very little, but I know of.
Yeah, no, you do the change if you end up finding it moves what you mean. I'm not benign at all, but it's not that clear. And of course, it's absolutely few. And I think everybody's having a good job trying to keep it covered and keep it clean and distraction free. It looks so many people coming out that they like, you know, stores. But I mean, there's not many of them to do anything else than that.
What's crazy to me is kind of the word is you've got a beautiful floor there and the walls look horrible. But to me, that's the clash of that building, right? The real story of that building is the beautiful floor. And you know, even the floors in the front there where the restaurants are and the former concession stands at, the floors are immaculate, but the rest of it is horrible.
Well, that's what you, uh...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
As far as sentimental things, I don't believe that someone renovating it's going to take that. I'm not... I hate to sound cold, but I am on your side of that. I believe that they don't realize that right now, but I think if we're actually being good guys, they might be happier. But right now, they may not see that.
What we spoke about is...
That's okay. I'm fine with that.
The sentiment of it, like you said, if it been that sentimental, then I've been able to fix it long before now. So I think it's just the change. The change of it is what they were... And that's what the only thing I've heard on. But it's not ever new to us if we don't, you know, go forward with it progressively forward. There's a lot of children out there waiting to use this facility for it. And it's sitting there locked up right now.
I think I saw my first family's script. We need to get this needs to be surveyed. We don't know what's next step needs to get that survey done, but I think that's what we need to do, right?
Whatever you guys want to do. It would be a good step if you're thinking about selling it.
I don't have questions.
But I can contact, I can contact Mr. Turner's attorney and look about lease agreements and he can look over other systems that have done this, at least buildings, to community organizations, those sort of things. We can look at the lease option, if children, if it's a lease option. Then again, that leaves the repairs, these will be the repairs even if it should still be your building that, you know, ADA compliances and if you can open it up to the general public. And I don't want to talk about the C-word codes or anything like that. I just, looking at the electrical box, I just think, wow, this is a, I'm in a time warp right now to probably the late 1940s. And then it's been added on over the years too, when it was used by Woodbury Grammar, the old Woodbury Grammar. And when it was utilized then and with junior, probably they've added some stuff to it. So, you know, I'd be glad to explore with the attorney, with our attorney, the lease option as well as the service.
My honest opinion on this is I think we need to get this on the agenda with the commission and at least try to get them to put it to a vote. And if they agree that they would want to sell that building, then we can make a decision.
Is that the form of the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah. If they agree to that, then we can, we can survey it. We can do anything until I know that they're going to sell this building. This is a moot point. If I know that they will sell it, then we can vote on it. But once we call it surplus, it's up to them. And I don't know, I don't know completely what they're going to want to do with it.
Okay, so...
Your motion comes on...
You want to get it before the commission and do the survey?
I don't think there's any need to do the survey unless...
Till it calms down, okay?
But yes, after they agree to it, yeah, it's their main decision.
So we'll look at that.
And all we have to do is declare surplus.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Call roll, please.
Trying to get the motion to hold the motion is to hold the county commission regarding the possibility of declaring the veterans' day and the gym surplus. Is that, is that the form of the motion?
I would like them to vote on whether they're willing to sell the gym. I don't know if we can get them to do that, but that's what I think they're going to do.
Okay. You're saying to have the county commission to vote. Motion to have the county commission, the county commission to vote regarding the possibility of selling the veterans' memorial gym. Is that correct?
It makes our decision the whole way.
So motion made by Mr. Fan, signed by Mr. Elwade, to have the county commission to vote regarding the possibility of selling the veterans' memorial gym. Mr. Elwade?
Uh.
Mr. Fan?
Uh.
Mr. Turner?
Uh.
Chairman Sanders?
Uh.
Chairman, four eyes and one face.
Motion secured. Okay, moving on to item number six. It's our review of policy section two, which is fiscal management policies two point one zero zero to two point nine zero zero. Hopefully you've had a chance to look over those. Mr. Curtis talked to us at the workshop about some specifically. Again, we're not approving or revising. We are just going on record that we have reviewed these policies as per our policy.
That's your thing, correct?
It did. All right.
Traditionally, Mr. Sanders, chairman, we are, we just make it, we make the motion out of the done review. It's once as much as this.
I'll make that motion that the review has been done. Do we have a second?
Same.
Motion has been made and second. Call roll, please.
Motion made by Mr. Sanders, signed by Mr. Fan, to school board fiscal management policy two point one zero zero, two point nine zero zero for review and motion to approve the review. Mr. Elwade?
Uh.
Mr. Fan?
Uh.
Mr. Turner?
Uh.
Chairman Sanders?
Uh.
Chairman, four eyes and one face.
Motion secured. Item number seven, our safety report was given at the workshop by Ms. Patterson the other night. Great report, so if you were not able to hear that, give it to her. Item number eight, these directors' comments. We've got two minutes.
Thank you. I had to be limited to two minutes. It's always a pleasure to be limited to two minutes. Uh, we've had an interesting day heading into schools. We started off today and obviously we've got a little report today. At the high school, most of it seemed press release. And Mr. Justin Davis, I would probably try to get him and Coach Jones here at some point to honor them for his generous donation of forty thousand dollars to the Kennesaw baseball program. And I think a very positive press conference today. Members of the press here, they're not telling you if it was positive. But it was a positive for Kennesaw. And I made the analogy of it, it was like we'd had foul balls and bongs and strikeouts on this whole process, but the, Mr. Davis stepped up to the plate and knocked it out of the park. And we appreciate him. We will start construction immediately. Coach Jones was in my office later earlier this afternoon and he started the bidding process and getting the bids out and that's will be advertised in the newspaper. And hopefully we'll get those bids. I think it's around the twenty-third is when he's going to, two weeks advertising the paper and then the twenty-third. I did remind him that the board, at the press conference, that the Kennesaw Board of Education did vote earlier in the year to allow fourteen thousand four hundred dollars for concrete work on the facility. We will be bidding that separately. It's the board, it's the board action. So running it through the books at Kennesaw, at the high school on everything else because it was funded and the check was getting to the high school. And then the fourteen thousand four hundred dollar concrete work, we'll get this, I was working on the specs on that and we'll get that out, that was probably in the paper in the morning. Actually getting the specs and he mailed that. So I'm very, I'm just overwhelmed by such generosity. And when others live and fund, he did. And so he stepped up the plate, so. And it is committed effort of donors to come out, so to me, that was an extremely positive one. We had one incident, I was on my way, I'd already come back to the office, before we went to the office and got a call that there was an accident in front of Woodland School. And I appreciate everyone's prayers for the people that were involved in that, in that accident. A city of Woodbury water truck hit rear ended a, a car that was turning into Woodland School. And myself and Ms. Lisa Black, she came as was myself, and we called counselors in because some of our students did witness this accident and involved one of their own in fifth grade room. And so that individual student was lifelined to Vennacle Hospital and I have not heard any recent thing. I'm sure Lisa did hear anything.
He is, he is in stable condition and will open his eyes and lay down.
So we praise the Lord for that. And we appreciate everybody's prayers and concern for that young man and the whole family and what was involved. And what I was concerned about, one reason I didn't go on site, was we were very concerned about the critical response team had to come in and they were in another part of the state that had to come in and we had to wait there, but they did get everything and they left the scene about, police said like fifteen minutes before our buses arrived from dismissal. So that's another, another thing to be very blessed about. We were glad to do that. I did have our SROs in there just in case we needed to direct traffic as well as the, to be the liaison to the highway patrol and the other officers that were on the scene. So I appreciate everybody's deal and that was, you know, right in front of the school. And we assisted in any way possible with that critical response team. Other than that, very busy time with county commission. I've been on, I've been named the vice chairman of the financial management committee because I'm by law having to be on that one. And so that centralized financing and they're exploring policies and procedures and looking at hiring the financial management director. And so we've got a long way to go on that. Lot of, lot of questions about that and a lot of questions from personnel in our office that they would have to be transferreded. Still a lot, I guess more questions than there are answers. And they're going to develop those policies in regard to that of the nineteen eighty-one act. And so there's more to come. I'll just put it that way. I hope everybody, my tune is probably out over anyway, so. But I appreciate yours and I'll let you know directly upon that. Mr. Chairman, also at pursuant to policy two point one hundred, we probably need to set some budget hearing dates is what I would recommend under your comments.
Do you think that that's going to save money or do you think that's going to cost extra money?
On record, as I look into the camera, take my glasses off, I think it's going to cost the county money. It's going to cost the county money. And what's going to happen, to be perfectly blunt, is they're going to try to get this forward to send forward their personnel over to them and us pay for it. And I just don't see that happening. There's more conversation there because the law says you shall, not you will, or you must, or it's a mandate. There is a, there's a battle brewing there that I can see coming down the pipe and it may go incorrectly that like either of us want, Mr. Fan. So to answer your question, no, I do not. But over, now over time, the argument can be, over time, positive. But in immediacy, and I say immediacy being the next couple of three, two, three years, I don't see it, but maybe to be determined. I hope that is politically tactful. Answer to that. That's, I think to be determined is your answer. I hope you, I hope I answered that, Mr. Chairman, satisfied.
I'll say you got the term answer for us. Tell us where we are. If you had a chance to analyze it, I'd really like to hear.
I have looked at it a little bit, Douglas, can I look at this? You can see the report in front of you. We're on track. There have been no huge major expenditures out of this, other normal operating procedures, no normal operating expenses. I've not noticed anything, just spiking. Lisa is here. Attendance, Lisa, we didn't have that many, it was basically a wash is what I want to call it, attendance. Those that left and those that come, you know, in January.
Yeah, January is a hard one because they're coming up. So it's a three thousand per hour.
We've had some leave, we've had some come. So I think we're probably going to be a wash in attendance. And we're watching those figures closely because we know the sampling of that, luckily the sampling will be in February, not in January, if they do the sampling for the BEP. I was at the director's meeting too in Coquelin yesterday. A lot of talk about BEP. Ms. Olivia Hardgrove is the state school board. They have, we have a state Tennessee school board and she is a member from the upper con, she's the chairman of that, of that school board now. And she's also chairman of BEP committee. So we let it down, some of these things, we know that's coming down the pipe, like additional BEP teacher group, some of the other things. I already know rapidly as well as other directors, so we're going to see what happens there. But no, to answer your question, no, we have not. Any major expenditures. If you start looking at the pursuit of the budget and revenues, we're looking at forty-eight point one, right in, right in the middle where it should be. Douglas may have some particulars there to notice anything on yours. And percentage of the budget, the total expenditure is thirty-five point nine seven. But you know that somewhere we still have that big expenditure on paying, take it over the summer, so. Douglas, you had any comments on?
Between now and February twenty eighth is the biggest time we've seen from that. So we've got to get chucked out in December to get to January, February and that slow way there.
So we need to keep expenses under control.
That's what I said. Need to keep expenses under... We are trying to keep expenses under control, Mr. Chairman, trying to. What we're doing, we had the flood, you know, at the central office. That right there, that one office was flooded. I just think the one in the office before that weren't pushed down records. It was in Ms. Bacon's office, so they've come in, cleaned and Belfour has come in. Belfour's recommendation though, has been to really rip up the carpet and replace that with some sort of flooring. And we've not heard back from, from our insurance company yet, whether that's going to be acceptable from what the adjuster said. But normally there's not a huge question, but he, he said we're going to be reviewing all the carpet back. That's been damaged from that. The reason, the reason, because our staff will tell you, we've had in the, in five years, we've had ten different incidences of pipes leaking down our central office, so. I hate to report that, but I mean, it's just a fact of life in a nineteen thirty-four build, building that we are, that's as lost as current. And one thing else, as we start the budget process, again, these hearings are going to be that, so I would certainly be glad to look at any dates possible, put on there so we can start. I'd like to do at least one date between now and the third first. I've asked for needs assessment from principals due by the third first, so principals should probably be after that, so. As we spoke at board meeting, I'm ready to just start looking at budget.
Okay, as you are thinking of that, I'll be with your calendar. Under chairman's comments, just again, I like to emphasize the fact, we, on the policies, we're just saying that we've looked over them. You obviously have from the time our packet comes, but if you would continue to look at those, please feel free to get with Mr. Curtis and Douglas if there's something you want to explore. You know, it's always good to stay up to date on our policy. TSBA does help us, but we also will be prudent as time changes and progresses. So with that, we'll open the floor for dates for our first budget hearing in January.
Here it is. Well, it is, that's, I'm just...
It's cordial away.
I'm just going by policy two point two zero zero.
I know.
Hearings and reviews. Now you can call it a review, Mr. Chairman, if it's a nuance here or semantics. A review might be the better of all of the hearing.
Mr. Curtis, I know you said you're on a lot of different committees, both within our system and within the county, so what's...
Our next budget, finance management committee will be on Martin Luther King, the twenty-first at five thirty. Other than that, we're looking, we got a Kennesaw versus, Kennesaw High School versus Megan County home game on the twenty-fifth is on there. The thirtieth, I do have some training. We have a Tennessee Promise mentor training at the central office, so if you sign up to be a mentor for Tennessee Promise, that's on the thirtieth at three to five, but other than that, that's it. Kennesaw High School at DeKalb County on the twenty-ninth.
Tuesday.
Tuesday ninth.
That's a, that's a way.
That is a way, yes, sir.
Well, I was, well, excuse me, my thought suggestion would be if the finance committee's meeting the twenty-first, let's look at a date after that, with the exception of Friday.
The twenty-second looks good. I don't know about the commission on what their budget hearings are. Members of the press might can help us on that. If the budget committee has announced when they're going to be meeting again.
They're going to schedule a lot of meetings and then one week before the actual deadline and scrap everything.
No, okay, so. Thank you for that bit of information, Mr. Curtis.
From the record.
Okay, that's...
Like a true journalist.
But I'm thinking the budget committee is going to be meeting multiple meetings. I don't know what their, when there is, but unless I'm asked to come over there, I'm not going to be over there until, until we, I've got to be there at a budget meeting.
They start in February.
Okay, so they're...
But you guys probably be down the, down the road.
Because we only need BEP figures to be on until late.
Doug is pretty accurate in what he's saying. I've been listening to some of these budget committee meetings they've had already.
Mr. Curtis, I believe...
Twenty-second looks good to me, the twenty-fourth, twenty-third, the twenty-eighth.
I believe your recommendation was, well, maybe not for the principals just yet, but as we move forward here from two principals and supervisor.
Yeah. If we go to February, we got the, the needs assessment is going to be on the third first.
So this first one, would that be...
Central office, we need central office. We could see that.
Yeah, because we might have.
And then we could do, we could start going through the central office and, and just then we can win and we'll have those. I have a couple of the supervisors to be, Dr. Melton is here. I'm sure Dr. Melton is always, always want to prove the top budget in her budget areas that she's responsible for. We could probably do, Lisa, do you think transportation or you think not? Ms. Black, you think, sorry to calm you down, but that's probably my job to see here. So Ms. Black, you think you could do a transportation budget by the twenty-second?
Of January?
Of January?
Well, sure.
Or do you think, or do you think, because we still got that out on those grants?
Well, it's been waiting on the grant, so.
We did get good news, though, we got the seatbelt grant. I think I just said that to you yesterday that that, we've got that back from the state, so.
We've already knew we had that.
Right.
See if we could retro be a bus this next. I'm not going for ZX.
Or would you rather ESP? Are you going to wait?
You're not ready.
You're not ready for ESP yet, no, I think, yet.
Ms. Black, I'm sorry if I asked this before. Did they tell us when we would know something about that grant?
Well, I got something today that said some counties will be asked for additional information and they, the grant didn't look like the buses would be here before the August issue. Like you got approved, your bus wouldn't be here coming in. But I really wasn't counting on a bus.
Right.
I'm just trying to get rid of...
Right. So when do we know as far as the approval?
Every day. I think originally it was the fifteenth of January, so I hope I'm just in that they need more questions.
I think, Dr. Melton, you could be ready, is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing, Dr. Melton?
Yeah, really. What date is that?
The twenty-second, maybe, possibly, depending on the little board. We could do probably supervise the instruction category. Now that's not teacher salary, y'all know that, okay? Y'all, because we don't get that done just until June one, maybe?
We already know.
July?
We don't have to have it, but we already know we don't have to have it because the state is taking it.
Correct.
So we're going to have it.
So technology, we can do technology, so, so yes, Marshall, then you?
It's just textbooks, I mean.
Okay.
Normally, I don't even think we've got our projection for next year. Next year will be P L A and I believe that'd be a big chunk. This year's social study, except not in P A lab. Science and P L A are our biggest tiers and we're changing the cycle a little bit, so. But they usually send us some projections out what we should average for a student or purchase book. I haven't received that yet, but I can ask those textbook position in P L A.
And again, these are reviews, not numbers, but reviews. And they may be subject to being reviewed, reviewed, reviewed.
The only thing y'all can do is decide if you want to put in, but because we're halfway through a year, we don't know how to do it.
No, it's a cost a little more than things go.
Biggest component is salary, like I said, that comes with the late, the late time.
We're going to be entering collaborative comments in after February, so we'll go with the...
Insurance, you want to hire one, so then you do. The big, the big factor is going to be that you decide if you might want to put in or not.
Well, but going off what Mr. Fan just said, if I could throw this out and basically pick a date and kind of go from there, it's always good to have a brainstorming session with the timeline of it.
Yeah.
But we, with the timeline, Curtis.
Yes, I understand.
We...
I'm not that one of them, I wish. It's like charity and speaking.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be agreed to.
We've got a communication.
We know we have to consider the raises primarily with food service and special ed, so we can discuss that. We know we have to look at nursing position and physical aid position. And we know we have some capital projects such as our roofs.
Let's grab referrals, I love referrals.
Is that this year?
Fifty cent raises, whether you're going to do anything on that or not.
Yeah, so that's what stands for is, I guess, the rail that's across the board.
Food service.
Lisa, on that, I thought there was a timeframe and theirs ended in, seem like I remember it was like not in the middle of the budget year when you, when I came on the board. I don't know.
It's just up, we don't do it until next year they're due. For us, we need to decide if we're going to give them a raise for next.
For the nineteen...
Nineteen, twenty.
Twenty. So we do need to be working on it.
Yes, sir.
But I, correct me if I'm wrong, I remember them coming like in September, October, after we'd already set the budget, was that?
That was contracted.
That was, okay, you're talking county. You're talking county. When is our contract up? Is that...
Same time, we look at a lot of votes at the same time.
Oh, boy.
Yep.
Can you do, okay.
And I like that one.
Okay, so that gives us three things. If you, if you guys think that's a pretty full agenda.
January twenty second.
Is it, well, I just, I don't have anything else.
I'm good on that day.
I could have some ready for bus drivers, why can't you?
Technology, we're going to, technology, ready if you want. We will tackle technology, lady. Now let him go first.
It doesn't stop.
I'm here on the twenty-second, is there another date? Travis, did you work on the twenty-eighth?
I worked that hard.
You got some on the twenty-eighth, Travis?
Not as of right now with the commission, but that is subject to change after the nineteen...
And I'm presuming there's a ballgame on the twenty-second.
The twenty-ninth, Kennesaw High School versus DeKalb, at the county.
Twenty-second.
The twenty-ninth. Twenty-second. Don't know.
Usually they play...
Basketball scheduled for the twenty-second.
Yeah, they should have a game. Yeah, they should have a game. Should have a game. I'm not for sure who it is. Uh, I think it'll be a home game because we come off of, we come off of York.
That's why I was. Come off Tuesday if possible, but.
I'm, I'm.
You over? 28th.
Twenty first, York against the 26th, uh, the 25th, DeKalb County.
They take tournaments, are clear.
And they take tournaments, will be going on like that same week. But we're not utilizing, teach, I mean, any teachers or meeting principals. We'll be okay when you say it, this person's saying, on the 22nd.
I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm just looking at you. I don't know if we can go. You never know how to be, Mr. Man. We want to.
It's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday?
Six thirty.
We also, we're also getting something on the 27th. How possible is that? We can't remember that name, but it's in our door, Paul.
22nd.
That was disgusting. I'm glad that it's good.
So one thing is, uh, the 22nd, is that late to work for everybody? All right. Um, make a motion that we have a budget hearing slash review on January 22nd, six thirty, eight thirty, two hours. No way around communicated time. We get this like. You're ready?
I'm ready. I'm ready. I'm ready.
It's still nine o'clock, isn't it?
It is. I'm ready, whatever it is.
Okay. Do we want to set just the one, since we got our meeting here?
Just watch our basketballs.
Now, that's what I was thinking, March is going to be state tournaments.
We're looking at probably the 28th, the 31st, possibly the next week.
February.
On February.
I can see it all that way.
Okay, well, I, this thing, this, this thing, Rob, it will, it's, it's.
Well, um, I don't want to hear from the principals.
Right, and that's after February, so that, the needs assessment will be in by the 31st, so you can, you know, we can start, we can get those February dates.
Our regular.
Uh, I will be out of town, Mr. Chairman, uh, on, at, uh, UCIP Rattinate Academy on the 4th. And then the next two days is a toss legislative conference that I will be at with, uh, the two civilization, UCIP Rattints on the 5th and the 6th. Possibly could do one the evening of the 6th, that's what we see, I'd say. And then the county commission meeting does meet the 7th, so that first week probably will.
Is out.
Is out.
The next week is our regular meetings, so the third or fourth week. Travis, we'll start with you. Do you have your schedule?
I'm looking at that.
Okay.
I'm, I'll form the 18th.
Eighteenth is Christmas Day. It is a holiday for us, yes, it is. It is.
It's the ninth date, the home or away game?
There is no game scheduled unless it's district. We're, we're, I do not have a date for that. District tournament. The last.
Uh, it will be district tournament.
Yeah, district tournament will be, district tournament will take place right after, the week after the Monday.
So when do my regular meeting?
After seven, seven. Whatever, when's the last game, seven?
It's February the 7th versus.
Okay. Your district tournament will probably start that next Monday, I think it's the 11th.
All right, so Travis, your 18th and 19th?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Which, which one do you guys want to do? On your Tuesday?
If you can get me that, if that's out, that's fine. We're lucky, I expect.
Okay. So the 19th it is?
And, Mr. Chairman, you just go ahead and select the schools there for you or you want, you want, I'm assuming you want two schools, you think that would be enough?
I believe with two in our timeframe, like you suggested, two schools and a supervisor.
Okay.
Um, I don't know, in an athletic order.
I can start down the top. We can, we can just start down top and go all the way back through. Two schools plus, uh, and a supervisor, central office position, and your supervisor. Marshall already gives, uh, on the 22nd. Marshall, you give the fact, I'm going to be a very good class, you think?
That's on Mondays.
Okay, so we're good? Okay, Mr. Coach, we're set. Now, lock those two out, so we'll look at the supervisor for you.
Does that make our policy requirement?
Uh, it does, it just for us to, to develop a budget preparation calendar. So we probably got prepared for preparations. So the countership needs as a gap for the budget, our taxes, or collecting budget data, et cetera, reviewing budget problems, making budget decisions. So, and again, this is continuous all the way, uh, 72nd. But I mean, you can go in here for the schools. If that's you do two schools, I would suggest maybe another one sometime before that month, but you can give that at your February 14th. Valentine's Day meeting.
Yeah, and.
I don't know.
And guys, I love you, but we are gonna, we are gonna stick to that, like, is that it, Valentine's Day?
Valentine's Day?
Yes, sir. Valentine's Day is an extra.
I don't know if that's you, but I still celebrate that 11 years later, so.
Well, if you're Mr. Curtis, you're praying for. It won't be a problem.
I believe it's only 15 percent.
I don't know, babe. Y'all all pretty good.
My, my dating status shouldn't be on different up here, but I'll just say that, hey, I'll be glad to.
Well, she is welcome to the.
I know, I know she is, but so. I will, I will do my best to not say anything except, here's my confidence right there.
That's insane. Never mind. Okay.
Depends on what's on the deadline.
You can meet the grounds and go on the 14th.
Some women, some women are particular, and if it's the 14th, the 14th is going to be celebrated, so.
I think it may be next year when you look at our agenda, so we need to look at that and say, okay.
Okay.
Before I laminate the couch.
Speaking of, we all need to go home tonight. Um, the next regular board meeting workshop will be at central office on Tuesday, February 12th, 2019, at six thirty. The next regular board meeting will be Thursday, February 14th, six thirty, here with the grammar school cafeteria. Do we have a motion to adjourn?